All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening or good afternoon. Mr. Pfeiffer, who is typically chairing this group, is out of town on directed travel by his employer. So he will not be here. I don't know, he'll boondoggle somewhere, those government employees are. So anyway, at this point, I ask Mr. Garcia to please take the role.
Eva Henry, Steve Odoricio, Jeff Baker, Lisa Jones, Abgardner, David Beckham, Eddie Wheelock, Sean Wood, Nicholas Williams, Anthony Kevin Flynn, Roger Partridge.
Here.
Laura Thomas.
On the phone.
Yep, I hear ya. Ron Angles, Libby Zabo, Tina Frey Cone, Bob Pfeiffer, John Marriott, Bob Roth, Allison Hills, Larry Videm, David Spelman, Aaron Brockett.
Here.
Argo Ramston, Aka, Matt Johnston, Roger Hudson, Ben Price, George Teal, Jason Bauer, Tammy Mauer.
Here.
Catherine Hyder, Laura Christman, Earl Holland, Richard Champion, Dale Christie, Rick Teeter, Benjamin Hughes, Debbie Nasta, Catherine Whitman, Steve Conklin, Linda Olson, Cheryl Link, Bill Gip, Daniel Dick, Drew Peterson, Lisa Jones, Laura Brown, Lynette Kelsey.
Here.
Matt Norquist, Storm Glor, Jim Dale, Paul Haysman, Ron Rakowski.
Present.
Mike Kilman, Stephanie Walton, Christine Berg, Dana Gutwin, Jacob LeBure, Harry Bean, Isaac Levy, Karina Elrod, Kyle Schlechter. Karina, are you on the phone?
I am on the phone.
Jacob Lovgren, Larry Strach, Wyn Shaw.
Here.
John Peck, Marcia Martin, Ashley Stolzmann, Annie Sullivan, Barney Drystat, Joyce Palazuski, Paul Sutton, Sean Foray, Chris Larson, Jordan Sowers, Julie Malika, John Dayak, Ellie Daigle, Roberta Mooney, Arklasis, Jessica Sandgren, Becky Felix, Herb Atchison.
Here.
Ed Starker, Adam Zarin, Deborah Perkinsmith, Alvin Meter.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, before you also have the summary of the September 5th Board Work Sessions, any comments or corrections that we need to make on that? Okay. At this point, the Chair requested there be no public comment on issues for which a prior public meeting has been held before the Board of Directors. If there's one from the public who has a comment, your time is between three minutes, but you're more than welcome to please come up. I'm seeing none, we'll move on to Ms. Lindsay.
Further than you thought, huh?
Can everybody hear me? Wonderful. So I am Emily Lindsay, I'm a transportation planner here at Dr. Cog, and I am excited to share with you today an update on our draft active transportation plan. So I came to the full board meeting, I believe, in July to give you guys a brief update, kind of near the end of the meeting, so there wasn't a lot of robust discussion, so I'm excited to hear what you all think today. Just as a quick reminder, we kicked off this project at the end of the calendar year 2017, and we've been working with local governments, local government stakeholders throughout the year to develop this active transportation plan. We did local government outreach meetings in June, we also did some public outreach on Bike to Work Day, and we've been working with stakeholders to develop a draft network over the summer and into the early fall. So we're here, we finally have a draft plan to present to you all and to our stakeholders before we release anything for public comments, so we're excited to hear your thoughts. Some outreach highlights to date, we've engaged 55 participants from 31 different agencies at five meetings across the region in June. Those were those workshops that I referred to earlier. And we also conducted an online survey and solicited over 400 comments from members of the public. We were also at 10 stations on Bike to Work Day and received over 200 responses to an engagement activity and talked to hundreds of others. So this is no surprise to anybody, but there's a lot of potential for active transportation for bicycling and walking across the region. A lot of Coloradans are known for getting out there on the weekends for fun, for exercise, whether biking, walking, running, jogging, hiking, the like. There's a lot of potential. Over half of folks report during a typical month that they get out on their bicycle for fun or for exercise, but we know that a lot of folks don't translate that into utility trips, to trips to work or to trips other than, places other than work. We also conducted a resident survey to learn a little bit more about barriers and opportunities when we're thinking about active transportation and the infrastructure that we build. This is just a snapshot, there's a whole lot more statistics in the plan in the appendix, but I just wanted to give you a quick overview of some of our findings. So we asked folks how comfortable or somewhat comfortable, and on the other side, somewhat uncomfortable and very uncomfortable, how they would feel on some of these facilities. So it's no surprise if there's no bicycle facility on a four-lane roadway, most people don't feel very confident. When you add a bicycle lane, a lot more people report feeling very or somewhat comfortable, but really, it's a much lower number, 20% would feel very comfortable. So there's a big chunk of folks that maybe they'll use it to connect from a trail to their house, but they don't really want to. Then when you add a buffer in there, a lot more folks report being comfortable, the separation from traffic translates to roughly 40% of folks that would feel very comfortable and over 80% of people that would feel very comfortable or somewhat comfortable. And then when you add kind of complete separation from traffic, a side path, a shared-use path, a separated bike lane or a cycle track, we're seeing numbers over 90%, nine out of 10 people would feel very or somewhat comfortable biking in these scenarios. So this just reinforces the concept of a high comfort network and the importance of separation of bicycle, bicycles from vehicular traffic. Let me just mention one more thing. So how many of you guys have heard of the four types of cyclist surveys? Yeah, a couple of you. So we use these results from this survey to develop our own kind of ranking, and we found 60% of folks are interested but concerned when it comes to biking, which is about the same as the national average. We did have a somewhat higher percentage of people that were in that very confident bracket, which again, being Colorado is not too surprising, but there's a still big chunk of the population that is a little uncomfortable. And on that same vein, we found out that folks would bike or walk more if there were more shared-use paths, this more separated from traffic approach, around 70% of folks. And then, just to give you the full breakdown, so 4% highly confident cyclists, those are those enthused, confident, I'm sure you know one or two of these folks, and we have the 12% of people that are somewhat confident, and those are like the typical commuting cyclists. I'm sure you know some of those as well. And then the 60% of people that are interested but concerned when it comes to bicycling. We did have around 25% of folks that are just not interested, no way, no how, are interested in bicycling. And that is lower than the national average. So you all had a link to the draft active transportation plan, but I just wanted to give you some, a quick overview of some of the major themes. Safety, crashes, this is something that comes up time and time again with our stakeholders, which is another reason we really focused on high comfort facilities, because they really do improve safety and perceived safety. This kind of translates into comfort and usability. Again, based on our survey data, we really wanted to focus on comfortable facilities, facilities that were usable by people that were traditionally not comfortable, unlike those facilities that have a bike lane or no bike lane. Connectivity of local and regional networks, of course, another big topic, along with access to and from transit, and equity across active transportation options is something we considered, especially with low-no-vehicle households and aging population, we really need to make sure that folks that need access to the active transportation network have that. And so this just follows along kind of with your table of contents if anybody has the draft plan pulled up, and we'll go through each one of these in a little more detail. So the introduction, Chapter 1, outlines some of the planning framework, and kind of gives you a preview of what's to come, and highlights that we'll showcase local examples, of course, describe the relationship to Metrovision and the Metrovision RTP, and we'll introduce kind of the order of the concepts. So Chapter 2, no, Chapter, let's look. Yes, Chapter 2 introduces the Regional Active Transportation Network. And these are a bunch of different components that are described in detail, starting on page 19, but just to give you a preview, we identified pedestrian focus areas, these are areas that have a high concentration of existing or potential pedestrian activity, and we identified using data from throughout the region, along with some stakeholder input. We also identified short trip opportunity zones, and this is something that's not traditionally completed in a bicycle pedestrian master plan, and this is kind of something of our own creation here. We wanted to make sure that since the region is so large and trips historically in the active transportation sector are so short, that we were taking account for these opportunity areas for short trips. So to do that, we used our travel model data to look at areas that have a concentration of short trips, which we classified as two miles or less, because the average bicycle trip in our region is 1.8 miles, so we thought that would be a good proxy. And then the active transportation corridors, which we'll get into a little bit later, these are kind of the big picture, the, sorry, I keep moving my hand away, the big picture vision for high comfort routes that connect destinations throughout the region. They might serve longer trips, they might also serve as connectors between important destinations, so they might just be a couple short, short miles that connect a longer trip. These are all critical to connect with local networks. So we really looked to local communities and to their planning processes, whether existing or kind of proposed. We considered different facility types that connect these different geographic areas. So here is an example, and this is highlighted in the plan on page 22. This, sorry, okay, it's highlighted in the plan on page 22. It shows kind of how these different network components all connect. There's the blue line, which is the active transportation corridor, we have the purple areas that are pedestrian focus areas, and then we have short trip opportunities zones, which are those areas in orange. And so they're not necessarily exclusive, some of them overlap, but it's just to illustrate the importance of developing connected, safe and comfortable active transportation components. All right. And then the next chapter is the Tools for Local Implementation chapter, and this is really the toolkit of the plan, where we look at new and emerging topics and some different planning level implications from the topic, some key resources and some areas that our local communities are excelling in, to give you guys an example, if you're curious what your neighbor is up to. And I'm happy to dig into this if anyone is interested. And then also, we outline the planning framework, local and regional strategic initiatives, these are in line with Metrovision and the planning framework presented there for consistency. We also highlight relevant case studies there as well. This is kind of the taking action side in that next chapter. And then county profiles are something I would like to walk through with you guys, if you could all pull up the draft plan. Let's see. So this is Appendix 1, and even though it's an appendix, it was a really important part of the development of the plan. Maybe I too can pull it up. And basically, this was part of our existing conditions assessment, that, oh. Sorry, everyone. The packet's not loaded, right? So basically, these county profiles allowed us to take a look at, oh, of course, I'm clicking on my meeting, that's what happens, take a look at existing conditions for active transportation across the region, especially because it's such a big region, it's a 10-county planning area, there's a lot of kind of intricacies and local things happening in jurisdictions that might not affect the region, but we certainly want to highlight, and went into the overall network building process. So, there we go. Hopefully. All right, well, we had a faster internet connection. Here we go. So, do we have folks from Adams County here today? All right, we got someone. So I'm going to walk us through the Adams County profile, just to give you an idea of what is included in these profiles. So we covered the planning context, just to give folks that aren't familiar with the region an idea of what's happening in local Adams County. We look at some socio-demographic factors. Adams County is welcoming, you know, 60,000 new residents from 2010 to 2017, so we're looking at a pretty fast growth rate, and what are potential reasons for that? Also, some socio-demographic factors that might implement or impact the implementation of some of these ideas. It has a very low median age, 33, a high percent of Hispanic and Latino residents, and the second highest family poverty rate of the regional counties. So to do that, planning and engagement of citizens, there are some ideas on how to customize this for Adams County, and each county is a little bit different on how this is set up, but we all cover the basic planning context, and we highlight plans and policies that are really important, that we took a look at in Table 10, we provided a sample. There are many, many more, highlighted in another appendix, a local plan inventory. But we wanted to highlight some of the great work that's happening in Adams County, for example, the Walk Bike Fit Plan in Commerce City, Connect North Glenn, Westminster's Mobility Action Plan, and provide people what the big idea of these planning efforts were. And this can help cross jurisdictional coordination, and maybe inspire some neighboring jurisdictions to do the same. And then, like I was saying, as part of the existing conditions evaluations, we looked at existing facilities. Of course, Adams County has an awesome foundation for safe biking on their off-road network, the South Platte Trail, Sand Creek, Clear Creek, High Line, they've got them all. And so this presents a great opportunity and a backbone for the Regional Active Transportation Network. We used our bicycle facility inventory to calculate some statistics about the kinds of bicycle facilities that are present in Adams County. You can see they have over 170 miles of paved trail, 70 miles of unpaved trail, some bike lanes, some neighborhood paths, so they have a pretty good foundation to build on. We also look at activity levels. Again, we're kind of limited with this statistic, just based on data availability, but we do look at the percent of folks that bike or walk to work, Adams County folks are clocking in at around 2%. And where there's a big shift in workers that live in one county and work in another, we made sure to note that, because it's a pretty important consideration when you're thinking about active transportation as a commute method, and whether you need to pair it with transit if people are traveling longer distances, or if most people are living and working in the same county, maybe active transportation for the whole trip is a little more viable. We also looked at traffic fatalities, there is a whole separate report that we put together about crashes, so this is just to give folks a quick update about what's happening, we looked at used crash data from 2010 to 2015, and so compared to the commute mode share, which is around 2%, we see that it's overrepresented in terms of folks' fatalities. 20% of traffic fatalities in Adams County are bicycles and pedestrians. That's pretty close to the regional average, but it's very interesting to look at it county by county, so you can get some more localized information than just our regional averages. Okay, we'll go back. So yeah, so that's kind of the purpose of the county profiles. We're really excited to hear what people think, if there should be additions to the county profiles, if there's plans that folks would like to highlight that we missed, or any other planning context that they'd like to be included, we're looking forward to hearing more from our stakeholders on that. But yeah, like I mentioned, we do have a dedicated report, standalone Bicycle Pedestrian Crash Report is coming soon, and we'll be publicizing that as soon as we have that final designed copy for you all, and this has a lot of great information that's very specific to bicycle and pedestrian crashes throughout the region, that looks at a variety of factors, way more than we could talk about today, this could be a presentation in its own. So we look forward to sharing that with you all soon. I'm happy to take questions.
Any comments or questions from anybody?
Mr. Chair, I saw you had a slide in there and an image of someone on a scooter on that. What type of engagement did you get from the, obviously Denver's, try to choose my words wisely, dealing with that right now, but what kind of engagement from the other outlying areas did you get on kind of dockless mobility, not just scooters, but kind of bikes and e-bikes and the possibility of that to start to improve usage?
Yeah. So in our Tools for Local Implementation, we covered e-bikes, bike share, dockless mobility, kind of the suite of those kind of new and emerging technologies. It's been really interesting, over the course of the year, you know, things have changed drastically in this space. Bike share, dockless bike share was introduced in Aurora, it's now since concluded, dockless mobility was implemented in Denver, and I think from the stakeholder perspective, they're really interested in seeing how these things can all work together, because they're small vehicles, they're for short trips, they move at relatively slow speeds. I think people are, for the most part, pretty uncomfortable with the sidewalk situation in Denver, but they do see similarities on shared-use paths or in bike lanes, because they're moving at relatively low speeds, kind of like bicycles. So without trying to date ourselves preemptively, knowing that this is like a really changing and emerging field, we highlighted examples where we can, we certainly noticed and have discussed the data implications of kind of shared-use mobility, e-bikes, the like. And that was a pretty big, let's get together and coordinate on this effort, but from a like planned building perspective, it was taken into account, but there was no lines drawn, and that's just take eight or two dockless mobility options. I think people are just considering it as a suite of like shared active transportation services.
This is Karina Elrod from Littleton, I have a question.
All right, just a second. Go ahead. Aaron. Go ahead.
When looking at Arapahoe County, Arapahoe County obviously is very different than the west as it is on the east, can we get behind some of this data to zero in on a particular
So if there's a specific data set that you're interested in, we're happy to look into that on the back end. If there's major indicators that you've like pulled out for us, it would be helpful if you could just shoot me an email, let me know what you're looking for, and we can try to integrate that into the profiles.
Anyone else on the phone? And Mr. Brockett?
So Emily, I just want to say thank you and congratulations on a great job. I was really impressed by the draft plan, I looked through it in advance, and a lot of things like this are kind of fuzzy and feel-good, and I really appreciated how you had, there's particular action items and ways to make things better in general, and then tied to specific counties, I was impressed by that. The STRAVA data was a nice touch, those heat maps, that's fun. So anyway, much appreciated, and I think this can really help move our whole region forward on this topic.
Thank you.
Rex.
Thank you, sir, very much. I would echo that as well, I think staff did a tremendous job, as well as the stakeholders that have been involved in this. I mean, there was a big, how many people in that stakeholder group?
We've had a rotating group of over 50 people participating.
That's fabulous, right, from around our region, I mean, trying to implement and actually aggregate all those local plans and that, I thought they did a fabulous job. To Nicholas's question with regards to kind of emergency modal technology and the like, you alluded to it, but there was a discussion at the last Transportation Advisory Committee about, you know, kind of doing some kind of group think, data sharing, we're not quite sure what that is, but I think it's really, you know, something that's come out of this discussion, that there needs to be a more collective conversation about, you know, how these new modal elements play into the larger picture, you know? So stay tuned on that, I think is really the answer. You might have further comments.
I was going to say, yeah, I mean, I think we're, we'd love to collaborate here, I think this is, as this, there's a desire for these, by the company certainly, and I think for some residents, for it to become more regional, I think if we can, the better we can coordinate our efforts on that, I think the better for the region. But yeah, we're more than excited to work with Dr. Coggin as forum on that.
Sure.
Other comments or questions on this item?
So what I might do, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to give you some idea of what the schedule is going forth, so our hope is to get this out for a public review and comment, probably by the middle of this month. If we can get it back to you all in November, we will, but if not, you'll see it in December in its final form. So again, I want to thank staff and all the staffs of our communities for working very, very diligently on this over the last year and a half or so.
Thanks, Emily. Sancho's Warren. She's going to talk about AAA.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Lots of information coming up. All right. While I'm getting this up, just for those of you that are new, those of you that are new, Dr. Cog is the Designated Area Agency on Aging for the metropolitan area. There are over 630 area agencies on aging. It happened, there we go. This is not what I want, okay, we'll do this. Isn't the right format? Can somebody help me? Just get it full screen, oh, well, yeah, can't get it to advance? It didn't advance. Oh, there, ah. So, there are 16 area agencies on aging in the state of Colorado, we are the largest. We cover Adams, Arapahoe, Denver, Douglas, Jefferson, Gilpin, and Clear Creek counties. The good news for those of you that are here from Boulder is Boulder has its own area agency on aging, they also did this survey, so you can access this survey, thank you, yep, yeah, next one, let's go to the next one, just to be efficient, there we go, thank you. So what do area agencies on aging do? Well, basically, we help people age better, and how do we do that? We provide services, we fund services, we advocate, we are federally mandated to advocate on behalf of older adults and their family members, and we are the regional planning entity on aging. We are in the process of doing our area plan on aging. So every AAA in the country has to do one every four years. And part of our process for this is doing what we call the Consumer Assessment Survey for older adults. We've done this since 2010, so we're going to give you three sets of data, so you can see how we've changed over time. The good news is Boulder County has done it those three times as well, and every area, every AAA in the state did a COSO this year, so it gives us a lot of comprehensive information about older adults. Why is that so important? Colorado is the third fastest aging state in the country. Our fastest growing population, the fastest growing cohort groups are all 60 and over. 74 to 79 is the fastest. 74 to 79 is the fastest growing, and the 90-plus is the next fastest growing. So we hear a lot about millennials, but the growth right now is in older adults. This isn't going to end when the boomers age out. This is the new normal. People will be living longer. This survey looks at six areas. As you can see, overall community quality, community and belonging, community information, productive activities, health and wellness, and community design and land use. So what is this look at? Overall community, what does that mean? This is how residents view their community, how connected they feel to their community, and how well they can access information and services. Why is this important? In the last presidential election, 91% of the older adults in Colorado voted. They vote. You as local elected officials want to know how older adults are feeling because they vote. Most of the Dr. Cog older residents gave high ratings to as community as a place to live, which is good. And about half of them said that the quality of services they get is good or excellent or good. The thing you should know in this, if you see a three-point difference, that is statistically significant. So we contracted with National Research Center to do this survey. They've done it for these three times in 2010, in 2015, and 2018. So we have a, we can kind of see where we're going. Unfortunately, you're going to see it's not always great news. So generally, residents will not recommend a community to a friend unless the community is seen as offering the right services with optimal effectiveness. About 2/3 of older adults said they would recommend the community to others, which is lower than the national average. You can access, so we did this, this is the regional report. We also did reports by county. So you can access your reports by county. We also did one for the city and county, or for City of Aurora because we're closely working with them in a number of areas as they try and adjust their older population. This is a significant statistically downward turn. Why? We don't know. But we have to figure out, and so one of the things that I do once I get this information is I go out and do community conversations, and I ask people questions about what's going on in their life and what's changed. This is a concerning trend, though. Go to the next one. This is about feeling connected, about feeling safe, about feeling respected, having a voice in your community, right? Two in five residents rated the sense of community as excellent or good. I don't think there's any big changes here that I wanted to highlight. Feeling safe, again, is really important in your communities. And how do people feel safe? That's something that you should be asking your community. This is, again, a statistically significant decline, fewer people feeling safe. So what does lighting look like in your community? How is crime doing in your community? What involves a lot of, a lot of people talking about traffic in our region, in our community conversations, and not wanting to go out when it's so congested? We ask people about crime and if they feel threatened. So this is a change. We're not heading in the right area in some of these, right? Being a victim of crime, 16% said they were, it's at least a minor problem, 19%. So that's pretty good, actually, because this was our big challenge, and so we've held it steady in the last survey. And then being physically or emotionally abused, 8% of folks said they had a challenge with this. Community information. This is the bane of my existence, trying to help people understand the resources that are available for them, how to access information, right? So frustrating. You all in your communities provide great things, but people don't know about them. And I hear that in the community conversations. I was in Littleton at the Bemis Library, who has a, you know, a special section for seniors. And this whole, this group of people are saying, I don't know how to access resources. And I'm like, right here, we could access resources, right in this very building. 56% of the respondents reported being somewhat or very informed about services and activities available to them. About 2 in 5 felt that they had excellent or good information about resources for older adults. We need to do some work in this area. Information is power. The more power, the more information they have, the better they can walk through the challenges of aging and the opportunities of aging, right? I was in a community and they said, we want more older adults to volunteer. And yet, when I talked to the older adults in that community, they said, there's no, there's no opportunities to volunteer. And I was like, okay, well, where are we missing this connection? And I think it's chronic throughout our region. Community information and needs, again, a little bit more. Feeling like your voice is heard in the community. 56% said it was at least a minor problem. Finding meaningful volunteer work, 34%. Finding productive or meaningful activities, 33% said it was at least a minor problem. The next one, productive activities. A little bit more about this skill building and enrichment opportunities. This is a big drop in our region compared to the last two times. And then employment opportunities, we see an increase, so yay. Over 1/3 of the participants participated in some kind of volunteer work, so that's good. That's similar. So there's also another thing that you should look at is there's benchmark report that you can access, and it compares us to over 400 other communities. About 2 in 10 said they use senior centers, which is a little concerning. But that's on par with what's happening across the country. So we're not exactly sure what's happening there. A lot of people have changed their name from senior center to recreation center, hoping to attract more people. Still not where we would like to see it. We're seeing a decline in park use, and I can't figure out what's happening there. I don't know if it's a safety issue, if it's a transportation issue, if it's a congestion issue, or if it's an accessibility issue. Are your parks accessible for older adults? This is the biggest section of the population, the biggest growth area. These are the people that vote for you. Can they use your parks? Overall, 42% of older residents in the Denver metro area said that they were providing care for someone else. That's a decline, which surprised me. And I asked in Jefferson County, went out to Jefferson County, and I talked to the county councils on aging, and I said, what's going on with this? Why do you think this is happening? It's a key informant session with the county councils on aging. And one lady said, you know, I used to care for, last time you asked this question, because I go to county councils every time, I was providing care for four different people. They've passed. I don't do it as much. I'm not sure what this is. We know that over 265,000 seniors take care of grandchildren in the state of Colorado. I don't know if that's changing in the metropolitan area, so there's more research that needs to be done in this area. Did I not change? Okay, good. Productive activities and needs. Half of the seniors said they were at least, they had at least a minor problem with having interesting or social events or activities to attend. Yeah.
Thank you, Jala. This is Councilmember Stolzmann for people on the phone. I just, I have a question. I mean, all of this is very useful, and I appreciate the comparison year to year. It's sometimes hard for me to understand how these numbers compare to the general population.
Yeah.
You know, so it would be really interesting to know, is that 42% of people having interesting cultural or recreational activities, is that the same as the rest of the population? Is that higher? Are they more interested? Are they less interested?
I don't, I don't have that data, so I can't tell you that.
Yeah. On a lot of these different ones, I've wondered that, like on the crime and safety ones and things like that, I've wondered if it is specific to this.
You would probably see higher rates for other populations, actually.
I have no idea. So I've just sort of wondered that. I realize that would make the surveying much more expensive, but that would be really interesting to know if the population, if it's a, if it's a problem throughout the community generally, or if it's specific to the older population.
Right. Good feedback. I think the reason why this is important is because isolation is a really big problem in the older adult community. And isolation leads to depression, leads to higher dementia rates, leads to higher healthcare costs. And so we look at these kinds of things to figure out what's going on and are there opportunities in communities? As area agencies on aging, do we need to help create opportunities, those types of things? How do we work with civic groups? How do we work with theater groups, whatever, to engage older adults in this? We don't want older adults in our community to use all of our resources. That's what I heard once. Yeah. They use all of our resources, and the fire department says, my biggest call is falling, I can't get up. Look at these numbers. Older adults contributed almost $11 billion to our economy. Paid, there's a lot that are still working, and there are a lot of unpaid services. Now, this is caregiving, right? This is providing care to children and to adults and helping families or friends or volunteering. Who are the volunteers in your community? Who are the volunteers in your library? Who are the volunteers in your schools? A lot of them are moms, but there's a lot of older adults, too. These people have value in your community, you want them in your community. They also have the highest discretionary income. Your businesses should be asking, what can I do to attract these folks to come in to my store or to use my business? Sorry? That's true, and that's the other thing, right? So you make a really good point, because seniors don't buy goods, they buy services. My mom, she buys for my daughter, my 10-year-old, right? That's what she buys. But she goes to the chiropractor, she goes to the beauty shop, she goes to, you know, she'll buy services. She buys services a lot, physical therapy, all sorts of stuff. Yeah, yes.
One thing that stands out to me on that chart, and I wonder if you can speak to that, the economic contribution.
I don't know how to get back.
By the way, my wife is an older adult, and she spends all of the money on the grandkids.
Yes.
Not, not on certain.
You know who the number one purchasers of toys are? Elders.
My wife.
Yes. And they buy the good stuff. They like buy the Barbie, you know, dollhouse thing, yeah. They buy the $100 toys.
So on Slide 17, what I noticed on there is that the unpaid, the unpaid contribution is fairly steady.
Yeah.
It's the paid contribution. That makes me wonder if that's a sort of a negative factor, that are seniors having to work more to stay in place or to just to support themselves?
Basic needs, yeah. More and more seniors are talking about they have to work.
How do you interpret that? Is that a good thing or is that a negative?
I think it's 18. I think it is a.
Slide 17.
It's both, right? Oh, 17, sorry. There you go. Thank you. Yeah, Brad's normally the one that helps me with this. I should have him sitting right here. It's both, right? I mean, I think there is value. What I know about healthy aging, and I've been doing this for a very long time, is people have to have a reason to get up in the morning, have to feel valued, have to feel purpose. It's different when you want to work as opposed to when you have to work. And I think there's both. I think there's more people talking about have to work. We get calls, probably two a week in our office, from a 70-plus-year-old person who wants to try and find employment. Now, part of you wants to say, good for you, because they don't want to be on the system. They don't want to take welfare. That's what they call Medicaid, right? And you want to say, good for you, you know, pull yourselves up by your own bootstraps. But then, on the other hand, it's sad that we have to talk about someone 70, even 80, who needs a job.
So in eight years, it's more than doubled.
Yep.
The paid, older adults who are paid.
Yeah, you know, I haven't really looked at that. So thanks for bringing that to my attention. And what does that mean?
And I noticed that that's, that's the period that we came out of the recession.
Yep.
And so it'd be, it'd be great to have some drilling down on that if we could.
Okay.
Mr. Dale?
If I'm paid.
You get, you get paid for the work that you do?
No, not income.
It's a job? No, no. Yep.
In this, I'd like to go over some demographics, and if you look at cohorts, and if you, what they use for sample size and.
Yeah, all of that is in the report that you have access to? I can't, I don't think I can remember it on my, but you do have, you do have access to that in the report and by your county. And it is statistically significant. So we had a lower rate of people, I know, I know. But I, it has to be, or else I have no credibility. So the National Research Center, we had a lower respondent rate than we've ever had before. I think that's partly our own fault because we tell seniors all the time, don't give any information out to anybody, ever. Don't tell them your name, don't tell them your, don't give them your Medicare card, don't tell them anything because there's too many frauds and scams out there.
Well, two, go ahead. A couple of things I want to look at is.
Dr. Dale, if you could speak into the microphone for the folks on the phone, that'd be great. Thank you.
I thought I had loud enough voice, but I'll go on. Couple of things I want to look at is how long the sample sizes have lived in this area?
Uh huh. More than 20 years.
They've all, they've lived more than 20 years.
So do you remember, Brad? Did you take a look at this? Yeah.
And then each, if we've got cohorts of each three years, as they age, what did they say, when you're saying, this is what they said, but as these cohorts age every three years, have their answers changed?
Yeah, it's not the same people. So what I know about this population, help me, so it's the, it's the under 70 population, and this is why we have to do community conversations, that answered the survey. So this was sent out to over 10,000 people. The 70 and under crowd, so 60 to 70, answered the questions. They were middle income. Do you remember? Yeah, they're kids. And so that's why we have to do community conversations, because we've got to go talk to the older adults, we have to talk to the lower-income folks, and we have to talk to minorities, generally, inglo too.
To Dr. Dale's question about how long respondents have lived in the region, so we asked, there is a question that's basically worded, how long have you lived in your community? And normally, there was, I don't remember the exact figure here, but normally it's right about 55% indicate that they have lived in their community for 20 years or more. The other, the thing that's important about that is community, right? That actually probably suggests that there's a fair number that would actually be within the region even longer than that. They're actually thinking about maybe their home that they're in today. There's probably a fair number that have been within the Denver region even longer than that, or so that number might be larger. But we always talk about that these folk, these respondents are very rooted and invested in their community, which is why some of these, these answers are really critical because they obviously want to stay in their community as well. So the needs that get identified are really important.
I think one of the things, too, that Mr. Flynn was talking about, people are living longer. And unfortunately, many of those. And unfortunately, many of those did not plan for life this long. And we're seeing that's forcing them to go back to work in an area where normally they would not. But they don't have the support financially or physically, and a lot of them have outlived their families. So there's, there's a lot of things that go into the problem that we're seeing with the older adults going back to work, with the Jayla's point as well. Some of them want to. A bigger percentage, I think, have to.
Power.
Power?
You know, you had asked earlier, Jayla, about a drop in participation in productive activities. Well, I think it's, it could possibly be a correlation to people having to go back to work.
Partly. I think so. I think there's a lot of factors, right, that could contribute to that, yeah?
I think it correlates to the scooters.
Well, to your point, ask seniors about the scooters in Denver. Wow, they have strong opinions. Yeah. And the thing we don't want, if you could just get them off the sidewalks, that'd be awesome, because that's the second most common way to get from one place to another for older adults, and the number-one form of exercise. So that, that is important. So if we could, like, come up with some legislation to make sure they're not toys anymore, that would be cool for that. Speaking, advocating on behalf of the older adults, which, remember, is my job. So let's talk about health and wellness. In this category, we look at physical health, mental health, healthcare, and independent living. So this area is very concerning to me. We see statistically significant drops in the people that said it was excellent or good. Access to quality physical healthcare declined between 2015 and 2018 and was rated lower than the national average. Only 3 in 10 of Dr. Cog's older residents rated availability of long-term care options favorably. This is really concerning to me. Look at the drop in mental health services. And again, and preventative health, right? We've put in a lot of effort as a community, nine health fairs going everywhere. Why is this happening? These are all questions I don't know. But, and if it were just one time, I think I would question it, but we've asked these same questions for a while now. And so I think it does have more credibility that something is changing here. Most, the good news is most residents rated their overall physical health as excellent or good. I tend to ask this in community conversations. I say, "So how many of you feel like your health is the same as last year?" And you get hands. "How many worse than last year?" And you get a few hands. And then, "How many better than last year?" And more and more hands are going up. And I always say, "Cool, why, why is that?" And they say to me, "I got a new heart valve. I got a new hip. I got a new shoulder," right? And so the medical advances have really improved people's lives. And so, and so there's, and also, I think there's something about older adults. "I'm okay. Don't worry about me, but you should really help my neighbor." I hear that all the time. "Yeah, I'm doing okay." It may not be our definition of okay, but especially with this senior population, it is, this is still the greatest generation, you know, we still have a lot of tough, tough folk. I don't know if that will always be. Yes?
The term availability is kind of a weird one, because the question is whether it is physically available to someone or whether it is available to someone with enough resources to get their pay.
Right, so I'm asking those questions in the community conversation. And here's what I'm hearing. Access to docs, so many docs have closed their practice to Medicare. And a lot of docs are retiring, or they're going because of the, all the documentation requirements. They're quitting their practice and they're going with Kaiser. They're quitting their practice and they're going with Centura. Then that person is left without a doctor. They try and find a doctor that accepts Medicare and they, and they can't find them. Kathy Noon, one of our very own, told me this a couple of months ago. She came to Aging Advisory Committee, because she's on, on the Aging Advisory Committee, and she said, "This is crazy, Jayla. There is nobody that will accept Medicare out there." And she was having to look for, she's struggling, I think y'all know with cancer, and she's struggling to find different docs to do different things and, and therapy. She said very clearly to me. The other thing is resources. So co-pays have gone up dramatically. And so people are saying, "I can't afford to go have this test. I can't afford to go to the doctor, because I had to put in, I had an extra expense. If I go to the doctor, I have a co-pay there. They're going to do a blood test, I have a co-pay there. They will probably send me to another test and I have a co-pay there. I could spend up to $200 to $400 in co-pays. I can't afford to go to the doctor." More people are exercising and more people are, or less people are eating more foods than vegetables. This is a problem. Access to healthy food is a problem for a lot of folks. And we see more and more people accessing food banks. And food banks don't have fresh vegetables and fruit traditionally. And if they are, they're a little bit sketchy and I'm not sure you want to eat them. I've been going to more food banks to see what's, because I keep on hearing more people talking about it. There's this little underground network, there should be an app for this, but what, what food bank has got fresh fruit? What food bank has some meat? What food bank has peanut butter? What food bank has a milk? People communicate that to one another, and oftentimes, in lower incomes, I'm hearing more people say that they go to food banks multiple times in a month just to supplement their food. I'm in that phase where I can't see up close, but if I have my glasses and look at you guys, you look all fuzzy. The most commonly cited physical problems were in physical health and staying fit and doing heavy or intense housework, right? So this is a bigger problem. The most commonly cited mental health issue was feeling depressed or dealing with loss, and also trying to figure out how to deal with their medications. This is a big problem that we see a lot. So they go to one doc and they give them medications, and then they go to another doc and they get medications, and sometimes those medications have adverse effects, or you shouldn't take one with the other, or one should be discontinued, and that doesn't happen as it should. Hospitalizations, 28% responded they spent some time in a hospital. And 34% said they had fallen and injured themselves in a 12-month period. Why is that significant? Because it's the second-leading cause of death of older adults. We don't want people to fall. It leads to really high healthcare costs in the end of life. And then oftentimes institutionalization, meaning nursing homes or assisted living. Remember that when people go into nursing homes, the average assisted living is about $4,000 in the metropolitan area, going all the way up to $12,000 a month, right? Some people, a lot of people can go in and pay that privately for a couple of years, and then they go on Medicaid. Nursing homes are about $7,000 to $12,000 a month. Can be even more, depending on the care of your private pay. Moving right along, which it's not moving. I'm sorry! So we want to go to Slide 23. Thank you. Are you just going to stay there? Community design and land use, right? So, "A community that is planned well by promoting mobility and independence, meaningful engagement to its older residents, provides high quality of life for residents of all ages." This is what I want you to think of as community leaders. What are you doing to promote independence and mobility and engagement? In the Denver metro area, 8 in 10 residents rated overall quality of life as excellent, so that's good. Dr. Cog elders' quality of life was rated similar to other communities in the U.S. Fewer, very few older adults felt like they had good access to affordable quality housing. Well, this isn't a shock, right? This is like a huge need in the metropolitan area. But you can see that significant drop in affordable, from 28% saying it was excellent or good, to 13%. 28% wasn't good anyway, and now we're at 13%. Only 27% felt positively about the cost of living. Her makes a really good point. You know, we get calls from people who said, "When I retired at 65, my income was just fine. I'm 85, and it's, it's harder, a lot harder. My doctor said I'm in pretty good health. I could live maybe 10 years longer or more. I am going to run out of money. What am I going to do?" We're in an interesting time, because people are outliving their money at a faster rate. We looked at aspects of mobility, right? Ease of travel by car, 65%. I can tell you, in our community conversations, I'm hearing a lot about congestion, traffic, and construction. Not wanting to go out, feeling frustrated about it, feeling nervous about it, seeing more road rage because of it. Ease of walking, this is important again, and a statistically significant decline. 62% said it was excellent or good. We don't want that to go that way. We want to go the other way. There are more in the survey, more questions about transportation. And I'm sorry, Ron, I didn't get the chance to highlight more of them, but I will in the future. About 3 in 10 people responded, saying that they use a bus, a bus or rail or other public transportation. Again, not where we'd like it to be. So how do we change that? And there are lots of initiatives out there, and hopefully we can be part of this solution in the future as Transportation Division and Aging starts to work together more collaboratively. One of these things, though, is ridership training. It's scary for folks if they haven't been on it. So we need more training for people. We need bigger font at the bus and the rail stations. Jeez, oh, can you read that stuff? I have to, like, you know, put my glasses on and, and are, is it accessible? When you walk up to those ramps on the, on the rails, are they accessible? Let's look at all of that stuff. Here we have 31% saying that safe and affordable transportation is at least a minor problem for them. 23% saying that having housing that Sutra needs is a problem. 16% significant decline in this area or increase in the problem. 16% saying they don't have enough to eat. I'm just full of good news, aren't I? So when we look at this, the two areas that we really do need to focus on in the region, if we're looking at, is community information still, it's been a problem my whole career, I think. And then community design and land use are the two areas where we get the lowest scores for community readiness. We asked some questions about, I'm going to skip a couple in the interest of time, because I know Doug's like, "Hurry up!" We asked questions about internet use, because seniors don't use internet, right? They're, they're the low, no, they're the fastest adopters of technology. They use most often technology, the email, texting, video to communicate, right? Why do you want Facebook? So I can see the grandchildren. I can see what they're doing. I want to learn how to Skype, so I can talk to my grandchildren. To get news on the weather, this is my mom. She gets on the computer and checks the weather, like, you know, constantly. Or news, what's happening? Research a topic, usually medical, where people go on to look. The least often is to look at advertisements or for training and classes, or to communicate with government, or seek services like a license or discuss a problem. Yes? Sorry. I jumped in.
On that research of a medical question, do they know which are credible websites?
No, they don't. I can tell you from personal experience and from community conversations, you always need to look at, right, who's sponsoring that information. Oftentimes, when you're looking up a medication, or let's say you're looking up something about a disease, it's sponsored by the drug company that sells for that disease. And that's not a credible website. That's why Network of Care that we, we have here is so important, because it is a credible source and it's, our medical portion is done by medical professionals and doctors. If you haven't gone on it recently, take a look, drcognetworkofcare.org. It's got a lot of information. So this is how they said they use the internet. Kind of good information. All right, so let's go to recommendations. These are the recommendations that Network of Care put together for us, based on the information they got. Encourage neighborliness. Promote intergenerational programs. Consider community design and land use policy to build community. Under community information, increase public awareness of programs and services. Take a look at your website. Are they senior-friendly? Can people understand? Can they access? Is it clear? Develop a clearinghouse for all services offered to seniors and community. That's what we're trying to do hard with Network of Care. Offer information and planning activities on a large scale. Productive activities. Promote senior volunteerism. There's a lot of your communities that actually have volunteer programs. That's good. Figure out what the barriers are. Are transportation a barrier? Here's something that I've been finding out about people. I'm like, "Why don't you go in the community conversations?" "Well, I can't hear very good." "Okay, so we need to get you hearing aids or get you a hearing assessment that's available out there." "My vision's not that great. I don't have money to afford glasses." There are services out there, including, so call the area agencies on aging. 480-6700. My staff will find services for folks. Increase participation of older residents in local government and community decision-making. Are all your meetings at night? And if they are, okay, good, that's good. Can you have some that are in the day? How is your lighting in your parking lot if they're at night? Do you, when it snows or it's icy, do you, do you manage the parking lots? Because that'll keep people in, guaranteed. All right. Pursue policies encouraging universal design and senior housing options. Low maintenance is wonderful. Provide attractive fitness opportunities. Support home modification repairs and services. There's some communities that waive fees for remodeling. That's a wonderful thing. If you can combine that with some kind of fair Home Depot says, "This is how you do modifications." Waive your fees for six months. Have support, have vendors that you vetted. That can be a really cool thing to help people stay in their homes. Again, consider community device. Again, consider community device, design and land use policies. Oh, we already did that. So where are we? Health and wellness. So here we go. Considering zoning regulations that encourage affordable housing. I know that's hard. Can you say to your developers, can you make 10% affordable housing, like they're trying to do in Denver? Develop programs that reduce housing costs. Develop time banks. Douglas County, excellent example of this. They have time banks in Douglas County. So if I, my dad lives in Douglas County, if I volunteered, I can work, I can put my time into a time bank for him and somebody else can come out and serve him. Senior transportation, it's a huge, huge challenge. All right. That's it. If you want more information, give me a call.
Any other questions for Jayla? All right.
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Dana.
We need Jayla's number. Jayla, really have, it would be very interesting, I think, if we could get a large part. I'm not hardly qualified to get in this age qualified community. You have to be 55, and I'm struggling with that. But there are people there that would probably give you some very, very honest answers, and a lot of them are the answers we don't want to hear. They have spent a lifetime working, paying their bills, helping others, looking after children, all this stuff. And the cost of living suddenly skyrocketed about 2008, 2009. And then their spouse died, and their income went down, and then medical costs are up, and they choose between pills. And some of them are moving in together, and that can be a problem itself. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Matthew?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn. Go ahead. No, he's ready, next.
Thank you. Could you clarify what the meaning of community is? Was it different for, my mother-in-law passed away, she was almost 101. Her community, her area was very limited, but for somebody who's 65 or 70, it could be much broader. Is there a lack of consistency in the data that might explain some of the results? A consistency, lack of consistency in the data, but in the sample?
I think that, I don't think there is a lack of consistency in the sample or in the interpretation because they keep on saying the same thing. What I realized in community conversations is that community is different for each person, right? And it's less about geographics. It's less about your county, or your city, or your neighborhood, and more about the people around you. So people are saying to me, my community is my church, my community is my bridge group, my community is, and they're not talking necessarily about geographic space.
Mr. Helfant, let's move on to the next item. If you have other questions, Jayla will be here. You can always reach her.
Good afternoon. Matthew Helfant, Senior Transportation Planner here at Dr. Cog. Just one second, let me get my question up. So good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. So Jayla pointed out a key concern in the older adult community here in the Denver region, its transportation and mobility. And one way that we can improve the lives of older adults and individuals with disabilities here in the Dr. Cog region is through our proposal that I'm going to talk to you today about. So just a little bit of background and history on the FTA 5310 program. Dr. Cog used to select projects for this program and its predecessors. RTD previously managed the program till about 2013, when it transitioned to CDOT. And federal statute requires that Dr. Cog, as the MPO, recommend to the governor who should be the designated recipient for the Denver region. And we've done that twice with the 5310 program, once for RTD and once for CDOT. So some background, this is a project, this is a program that funds projects that increase mobility of older adults and individuals with disabilities. And right around $2 million is allocated annually to this program in the Denver region. Projects are eligible projects include operating expenses to provide transportation for older adults and individuals with disabilities, mobility management, which is a way to organize transportation in the community and coordinate it so that it is more available for those who need it. And capital investment, most of the time it's vehicles, but sometimes also some small infrastructure projects like completing sidewalks, especially those leading to bus stops, or any other way to make sidewalks more accessible, or bus stops or transit stations more accessible. So eligible activities, the key here really is that any project has to exceed the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. So if we're providing services, the ADA requirements state that you must have those, have services that are curb to curb if you're providing demand response transportation. So these services that we provide through this program go door through door, door to door, and assist people to get into the vehicle, not simply just stopping at the curb and waiting for them to come if it's needed. So the funding is distributed through three different pots. So you can see on the map there, the Denver Aurora urbanized area is the biggest part of the map there, and that is a large urbanized area. And through this program, funds are distributed directly to the large urbanized area. And like I said before, RTD was the direct recipient. Then it went to, it's currently with CDOT. So there's basically three types of organizations that are eligible to be the direct recipient for a large urbanized area. It's the Department of Transportation, CDOT, a transit provider, or the MPO. Now, you can see the small urbanized areas, Boulder, Lafayette, Louisville, and Longmont, also on the screen there. And money for this program for small urbanized areas is distributed to the states, and the states make it available and administer projects in the small urbanized areas. And then areas outside of the urbanized areas or rural areas, the money is also distributed to the states, and the states, typically the DOT, distributes it and administers projects outside of the urbanized areas. So just some desired outcomes, and this is a little bit more global, because we foresee having a coordinated human service transportation program that benefits all vulnerable populations, individuals with disabilities, older adults, veterans, and other vulnerable populations. It's really about providing better service and more service to those populations through reducing administrative and service duplication. So with the same amount of funding, trying to do more. Breaking down silos, a lot of different funding programs have silos, and we want to break those down. And then just really, it results in efficiently using taxpayer dollars to ultimately provide more services in the community for those who need it. So CDOT, like I said, is the current administrator for this program in the Denver Aurora urbanized area. That was that large spot, but they also, like I said, administer the program for the small urbanized areas and outside of the urbanized areas. And they are doing an excellent job here in the Denver region. That is not the reason why we are pursuing becoming a direct recipient of this program. But I'd like to highlight some benefits that Dr. Cog can bring, and those are really the reason why we'd like to do this. First of all, as you know, we are the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization here, and in that role, we lead transportation planning for the Denver region and coordinate and collaborate with others in order to do that. Of course, with our planning partners, CDOT and RTD, as well as all of our member governments and the stakeholders in the region. We also, we also are in charge of putting together and updating the coordinated transit plan. And in the 5310 program, it specifically requires that projects of this program must come from that coordinated transit plan. So if we are working with the community to develop this coordinated plan that talks about what the current needs are and what the future needs will be, and then those needs are converted to projects, then it makes sense for us also to think about administering the program and being part of implementing the plans that we develop. So also coordinating and integrating multiple funding sources. Very recently, you approved, and thank you very much, and the community will be very appreciative, you approved an additional $1 million a year from the Transportation Improvement Program for Human Services Transportation for the 2020 to 2023 tip. We have that. Jayla talked about the Area Agency on Aging. We have Older Americans Act dollars, Older Coloradans Act dollars that we administer in the community. And so coordinating those two with the FTA 5310 program makes a lot of sense. And one of the reasons why it makes sense is blending and leveraging the sources to reduce match requirements. Now, many of you know in your community that there's often a local match associated with federal grants. Well, the FTA actually allows federal dollars outside of the U.S. Department of Transportation to be used as local match for, for example, for 5310. So we can use the Older Americans Act dollars that we are spending in the community as a match for that grant program by simply giving credit for the services that are already being provided toward that match. And that ultimately reduces the match requirements of the sub recipients of the program, the actual transportation providers and other agencies in the community that are providing the services. And so ultimately, that means that we can provide more services in the community through doing that. And so also, we, many of you know that we are working on an electronic trip exchange that helps these transportation providers share trips in the community, and this helps specifically with trips that go beyond jurisdictional boundaries or service boundaries. Oftentimes, there's an agency that it's hard for them to provide both sides of the trip, or they can't go all the way because of the boundaries they have. But now we are developing a way for them to share trips, and ultimately, this should help provide more trips in the community, and we can integrate that with this coordinated human service transportation program. And also, streamlining the process. So agencies have to apply separately for separate programs and contract separately at separate times, and they have to have separate audits for separate programs. And so that takes a lot of time and effort. And it also makes it so that it's difficult to budget and plan year to year when you're applying different times for different funding sources. So we can look at the region holistically, make the allocation decisions, and have an opportunity for agencies to apply once for several sources of funding, which saves considerable amount of administrative time and effort. It also, yes, these programs have different requirements, and so we can't get around that, but what we can do is consolidate the auditing process and the invoicing process so that they're doing it all once. They might have to report on separate things, but at least we're doing it all at the same time. And so this is a model of how administration could look in this coordinated human service transportation program, once again with those three different funding sources. So you have the federal government on the left, and then the funding flowing through Dr. Cog. And then these are some, but not all of, these are the major sub recipients currently in the Denver region. And so many of them either act as a broker and/or a transportation provider. In most cases, they do both. And so they have sub-granties as well that they select with the funding they get, and then they oversee them. And so this is, this is what that would, this is what that would look like. And then this just shows the money flow. And so those three different funding pots combine to get this bigger funding pot so we can fund more projects in the region. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you would have.
I'll answer questions, Elise.
Still figuring out the mic. Thanks for that presentation. So since Boulder County has its own AAA, we're very interested in this question and eager to work directly with Dr. Cog's staff on whether or not this makes sense and what the model would look like. And I appreciate the fact that we've put in that request and you all are being responsive, but still a work in progress in terms of what this might look like. And in particular, since as you noted, half of the small urbanized areas in the state of Colorado are in Boulder County, Boulder, Lafayette, Louisville, and Longmont. I guess we're particularly, we want to make sure that that funding continues to flow the way it has been. We haven't, we don't have any complaint with how things are going now, so we're going to make sure that at least there is no harm. And so I guess I, and pardon my ignorance because I'm not that familiar with this program, but is the money that is designated for small urbanized areas required under 5310 to go to those small urbanized areas? Or is it, if it gets thrown into the Dr. Cog pot, is it then eligible to go to other non-small urbanized areas within the Dr. Cog region?
So it, money that, the money flows to the large urbanized areas, the small urbanized areas, and the rural areas, and money that is earmarked for small urbanized areas must be spent for projects in small urbanized areas, and same thing with large urbanized areas and areas outside the urbanized areas. And so we've had an ongoing dialogue with CDOT. And the way this would generally work is that we would become the direct recipient of the large urbanized area, and then we would discuss an equitable formula to get funding for the small urbanized areas and then fund them as well. And of course, part of that conversation would be about the funding that they're currently receiving, that they've received in the past, to try and keep those projects whole. And so we would, we would work with CDOT to work that out so that we would work with those communities and keep those projects whole. those communities and keep those projects whole.
If I may, I might just add to that.
Press for the button.
I know, right? No, I mean, I appreciate, there is some trepidation, I mean, some consternation about this, right? I mean, anytime you talk about someone else taking over responsibility for funding allocation, you know, we want to make sure everybody feels comfortable, and I think that's the case, Elise, particularly in Boulder County and the smaller urban areas. I think originally, we had only really discussed with CDOT the possibility of taking over the large metro portion, and then through discussions, it was suggested, or at least that conversation about, well, let's just make the region whole somehow, right? The money that flows directly to the Dr. Cog region, then it would be allocated according to federal law and all that kind of good stuff. But we will continue to work. We're not going to take action on this until such time that we all feel comfortable with how this is going to work. So I hope that gives you some comfort, but we will, we won't move forward. I think what we really liked about this, I mean, we approached CDOT probably a year and a half, two years ago, about this proposal, is really when I first came on and Jayla and I were talking about this a little more, and recognized the silos that we had just within the agency related to transportation and AAA monies, that it was like, shoot, I mean, it just made sense. If we could, you know, combine all the pots of money that are eligible for this type of service, we should probably do it, right? And we approached CDOT about that, and recently, you know, they came back and said, you know what? That makes a lot of sense. And so I want everybody to understand that it's not something, this is not an affront to CDOT. They've really, they've approached us about the next step in doing this, so I hope everybody understands that. But so, yeah, so we'll continue to work with all of our jurisdictions, all of the awardees right now that receive monies. We've had a meeting or two with them, and then we'll bring it back to you all when everybody, when we feel comfortable enough that, you know, we have a plan in place and go forward. But ultimately, it needs the signature of the governor to make that happen. I miss anything, Matthew?
And there would also be a pretty significant transition time for us to figure out everything and line everything up and coordinate with the other area agencies on aging in the Dr. Cog region, make sure that we can get that benefit of the match funding, work with the Area Agency on Aging in Boulder so that we're getting that match credit there as well, and coordinating with them, and we've reached out to them, and we'll have dialogue with them and work with them to make this work.
If I could just respond, thank you. That does give us great comfort and appreciate the willingness to work through issues. Obviously, figuring out how, right now, the small urbanized areas compete, as I understand, it's statewide for the money. So nailing down, how do you figure out which portion comes to our region? That's a question we'll want to know the answer to before we'll feel fully comfortable to state the obvious. So thanks so much for that.
Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to follow up on Director Jones's concerns also, and somewhat alleviated, but it would be really helpful to me, and I don't know any other directors feel that way, rather than just seeing a flow chart, would it be possible to populate a spreadsheet with numbers from prior years so that we could see how, and then have an explanation from staff on how these changes would affect that flow and how it could be different? And if I understand correctly from the presentation, because this is new to me also, we, as the MPO, we are the ones who designate who, what is the entity that handles this. So we designated RTD for a while, then CDOT, and now we want to self-designate ourselves. And it sounds like the advantage to that could mean some marginally additional money because of the, being able to use the Older Americans money as match. So it sounds very positive, but I'm numbers oriented, and it would be very helpful before this comes up for action down the road to see a spreadsheet of how the money flows now and how it might flow under this change. Thank you.
Mr. Deal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On slide 42 helped me out with these acronyms. I guess SRC, Senior Resource Center, and VIA, and Dr. MAC, and...
Sure. SRC is Senior Resource Center. They are located in western, they're Wheat Ridge, western part of the region. Then Douglas County is obvious. VIA is Vio Mobility. They're located in Boulder County, and they provide human service transportation, paratransit. They contract with RTD to actually provide some fixed route in Boulder as well. They're a pretty big agency. Dr. MAC is the Denver Regional Mobility and Access Council, and their role here is to provide a forum to discuss transportation coordination amongst the various providers. They also provide other services like driver training for things like disability etiquette. So they provide many different services that help with transportation coordination here in the Denver region. And are there any other acronyms that I needed to go through?
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Beacom.
My question, my question is staffing issues. Right now, CDOT's got the staffing set up and going. We do not, though we have staff doing similar things. So what would we have to gain in staff numbers, FTEs, to be able to do this, or is it something that would fit within our normal operation?
So, either way.
Well, I might take a shot at that. No, you are right. It will require some additional staff support for sure. Now, it's primarily on the contracting side, and that, so that side of the shop, the administration and finance side, and we have at least proposed, at least a part of a position within contracting that would handle that work. You know, as part of this, we would be eligible for up to 10% administrative, but we can take that off the grant amount to help fund that position. But it's from, you know, on the planning side, Matthew would certainly be involved with that, as well as, I'm looking to Ron, because he knows more about, you know, the guts of that, about exactly where the staffing would come from.
Pappstork, grab a mic somewhere.
Mr. Chair, Roger from Douglas County.
Go ahead, Roger.
Well, I really appreciate it more. I just have comments, not necessarily staff questions. As staff knows, Douglas County's had some conversations with this, and we have some pretty good concerns. I really appreciate Director Jones's comments regarding small communities. And what I really like to mention is, while I appreciate the presentation, whenever there is a issue that arises, I think we really need to hear pros, cons, challenges, problems. So what I didn't hear, well, first of all, I did hear that CDOT is doing an excellent job. Douglas County has been doing this. We utilize this heavily. We are one of the fastest aging populations in the country, so, and as Jayla knows, we've been doing an excellent job with providing transportation services for disabled and senior populations. So the point is, and a couple of things. Have we heard any complaints from CDOT? No. Have we heard any complaints from the recipients? No. Have we heard any complaints from the contracting agencies? No. And when it comes to reporting requirements, we in Douglas County have had no problem with any requirements of auditing or reporting. In fact, we believe it's been a simpler process working through CDOT versus going through Dr. Cog, what we envisioned. So I would like to say, you know, right now, this does not seem to be a good proposal. I really do see there's more challenges for we at Dr. Cog, but I see there's some advantages for Dr. Cog and other reporting transportation issues that we have with other federal programs. But what I didn't hear, and I did hear say, yes, this will be, provide more services. You can make that statement, that's just an opinion, there's no proof to that. Right now, we're working at a 6% administrative level. We're very effective with this. We do a lot of services contracted with area transportation programs. They are manned by a lot of volunteer hours. So from Douglas County, we have some grave concerns about this, and I really think we have to hear the pros and cons. And again, have we heard any complaints from anybody? No. So that's what I really appreciate, if we get that full respect, and that's what I really demand out of staff, just as, if you ever heard of our legislators, when they talk to lobbyists, said, you better be able to give me the pros and the cons. Here, I really don't hear any cons from the recipients, from CDOT, and for the contracting agencies. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pappstork, if you want to follow up with your questions.
Yeah, just the staffing. On the TPO, the Transportation Planning and Operations side, I don't think we see any staffing implications for this. Jayla's shop, the AAA, already has a couple of staff that manages the solicitation process for allocating the Older Americans Act funding for senior and disabled transportation services that are already flow through Dr. Cog, through the AAA. We've talked, as Doug said, talked a little bit about maybe the contract administration side, there might be some need to beef up that side and the accounting and finance department, but we think that we can handle the solicitation, and actually coordinating all of the solicitations across the various funding sources into one call for projects actually makes the administration of those programs a little bit easier.
This is Jayla, and Roger's right. Hi, Roger. They provide excellent transportation under the Older Americans Act in Douglas County to that it is, the Older Americans Act requires us to be, to audit annually, for them to turn in monthly reports on their trips and cost, costs of those trips. So it is, it is more of an oversight than CDOT money. That wouldn't change. The CDOT money would still be monitored the same way. They wouldn't put, we had a discussion on this, we wouldn't audit the same way on the $5310 as we do on the AAA dollars. No sense in putting people through that. I'd like to make the auditing process easier in the Older Americans Act, but haven't gotten there yet.
Director Partridge, if you're still online, yeah, you know, man, I appreciate your concerns down south, and we'll continue to have conversations about, you know, how we might be able to alleviate those, but really, I mean, it should be fairly seamless, regardless of who the designated recipient is. It's primarily just that, you know, we're responsible for the execution of that money. So whether it's us, CDOT, RTD, I mean, it really should be seamless from an awardee's perspective, but we'll continue to have those discussions with you guys down there. And I know we've had a meeting or two, and we can definitely schedule some more.
Very well, thank you. Edie Rex.
And I think the point is that no one's asking for a decision today. This is just a heads up of something that's coming for discussion, and those discussions are still planned for the future. So let's be interested in it, let's provide feedback, ask your contact by staff, but there is no decision. Jones, go ahead.
Just one question. You're allowed to take up to a certain percentage, 10% for administrative funding. Is that money that CDOT takes now to administer it? So I just want to make sure that we're not decreasing the overall pot by changing the...
CDOT does use that now.
Okay, so it wouldn't change the money. Great.
Any questions from anyone else on the phone? Anyone else here in the room have any other questions? Hey, Matt, thank you much. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda for today. Mr. Rakowski, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Hang on just a second. I got one in the room, and I'll come back to the phone.
I would charge the executive committee, the executive director and senior staff, to think outside the box and improve the abysmal attendance rate, which today is 32%.
We'd like to get more municipalities and counties to show up with these, but we don't control them.
No, I think you plan a way to do the process that may encourage people to show up.
Who's on the phone, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Jeff.
No problem. This is Director Baker. I just wanted to announce that our Public Works Director, Dave Schmidt, retired on Monday after 37 years with Arapahoe County. Today, we announced that Brian Wymer, the Transportation Manager, will be taking that position as Public Works Director for Arapahoe County. And so when you see Brian, please give him your congratulations. Thank you.
There is no other business. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you for the folks on the phone as well.
Thank you.